Yeah, we're all.
Okay.
Going back to the beginning.
Sorry about that.
Welcome you all to the Thursday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Ballot Game Planning Board. We have a rather robust agenda tonight. So I'd like to start with, um, Amy, can you give us a continuation on, um,
Yes.
Public hearing for Zero Maple Street?
Yes, the applicant has asked for a continuation to our first meeting in October, which would be October twelfth. And that's for Maple Street.
Any discussion? I would entertain a motion. I need a second to move it to October twelve.
Second, Nick.
We have a motion on the floor that has been seconded, made by Brian, seconded by Nick, to move Zero Maple Street to our first meeting in October. All in favor?
Dennis, aye.
Brian, aye.
Phil, aye.
Phil, aye.
Nick, aye.
That motion passes unanimously. The second item is, Amy, can you give us an update on Snut Trail?
Yes, um, at our last meeting, we had asked Jim to draft a possible decision for Snut Trail to be reviewed at this meeting. The applicant has requested that we hold off on acting on any decision until he wanted to speak with the Conservation Commission. So he's asked to be on our next agenda.
Okay, on, um, the twenty-eighth?
On, let me just see, yes.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to move Snut Trail to the twenty-eighth. Do I have a second?
A second.
Uh, motion made by, um, Brian, seconded by Dennis. Um, all in, any discussion kind of play? All for the vote?
Dennis, aye.
Brian, aye.
Phil, aye.
Phil, aye.
Nick, aye.
That motion passes unanimously. The next item is, um, continuation of public hearing on North and Blackstone, North and Blackstone Street. I understand you may have a new concept plan. Do you have one here with us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Can you introduce, um?
Sure. Are you ready?
My apologies.
Brian, Paul from Eric O'Connell, you're on behalf of the applicant.
Um, my name is Willie Mulclan, I'm chairman of the board. There's no relationship between his law firm and myself, just to be very transparent.
We also have our engineer, uh, Amanda Cavallari from, uh, How, uh, Grier and Halmon. Um, so Amanda is gonna get our, our concept plan ready. Uh, while she's doing that, just to remind everybody, we were last here on, um, June twenty-second. We're here, um, since then, just for continuance of our last, um, evidentiary hearing was on June twenty-second. Um, that followed our community meeting on June fourteenth, where we discussed modified plans with our neighbors. Um, the revised concept plans you're gonna see show, uh, further changes to the project site. Um, I think most significantly, the plan reduced the number of units from thirty-six to eighteen. So our initial application was for thirty-six. Um, we had reduced that, um, further with the last round of concept plans that you saw. And now the plans that we have before you are down to eighteen units, a fifty percent reduction in the density of the project from what we originally proposed. Um, so we've gone from twelve buildings, seven buildings, and now down to six buildings. So six buildings with three, um, townhomes, two bedroom each. Um, the development area is now reduced to just the existing field area that you can see from Blackstone Street, leaving nearly all of the existing woods undisturbed. And that area will be subject to a conservation restriction. Um, we're also expanding the conservation restriction area to improve the area that's close to our neighbors on North Street. Um, so the conservation area is essentially the area outside of what is outlined in yellow on that plan. Moment, there we go. But basically, the dark and, and medium green are conservation restriction, and the pale green is our development site, which is essentially the existing field area with some landscaping along, uh, Blackstone Street. The first building on the plan is now set back eighty-four feet from Blackstone Street. Let's close it three times. The legal required minimum setback of thirty feet. And that's twenty feet further back from the last plan that you saw. So the, the developed area is getting pushed further back into the interior of the site. Along that Blackstone Street, we're showing, um, green giant arbor varieties to further screen the built area of the project. So we've got the building set back almost three times what a single family home could be set back, and dense screening along Blackstone Street. We also have expanded our visitor parking from six spaces to ten spaces. You can see the first round of visitor spaces, um, uh, seven spaces on the left side of the driveway going in. And that's pushed further back into the interior, and we have three additional spaces further in, uh, the project site. So we've got, we've got eighteen units. Each unit has a two-bedroom or two-car garage, space for two cars in the driveway, and ten visitor spaces. So for eighteen units, um, we have four, um, spaces per unit plus ten visitor spaces that they would all share. The driveway off Blackstone Street has been positioned to minimize glare to our neighbors across the street. Um, cars coming out of that driveway would not be heading straight onto those houses, and that's, that's by design. So we've got a project now that preserves approximately three quarters of the land as conservation land, and uses just the existing field area for the development, with most, most of that area actually being lawn space rather than development area. So we think we've got a much better environmental impact with this project than would be the case with single-family homes developed on the site. Um, just a couple of other items I wanted to address before we turn back to the board. All of these buildings will have fire suppression systems. Um, that will significantly reduce fire risk. That's required by code, but it's something that you wouldn't see in single-family homes on similar, um, property. All have sprinkled fire suppression system. We conducted a water flow test on Blackstone Street in front of the property on August twenty-ninth. We had a crew from DPW on site and our consultant who helped us with the, the flow test. Um, we're awaiting the DPW's feedback, but our engineers, um, felt that the results were favorable, um, that we can provide adequate water pressure to the site without impacts on existing properties. We did look into alternate configurations for the driveway coming in for access. Um, any reconfiguration option that we looked at would add to the impervious areas and take away from the conservation areas. Um, and we felt that, um, that benefits of that additional access weren't really worth, um, the trade-offs that we'd have to make, especially given that the buildings will all have fire suppression systems, which again, you wouldn't have with single-family homes. So also, we think we've made good progress towards modifying the project based on input from the neighbors, input from the board. Um, we're happy to continue those discussions with you and look forward to your questions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board?
Yeah. What's the reasoning for the sidewalk going around halfway?
Yep, I mean, for a smaller project like this, where, I mean, the roadway is not gonna get a significant amount of use. I mean, we feel, we feel that's adequate. It's not gonna be a, a long walk for both the front of the street and the sidewalk if they want.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the snow, you know, winter time, and the kids going to school somewhere for them to safely walk to get to the bus. That's my concern.
So I, I know as far as spacing goes as well, um, if you look on the east side of the property where the, the units are, they're a little bit closer together, so putting a sidewalk in there, it's not gonna have, um, it's not gonna add much distance, but impervious coverage to the area. Um, so we put it where it was spaced out more in between the driveways to give them a little bit safer space to walk. But as you get closer to that east side of the property, there's not much room in between the driveways and the.
So maybe just pretty much using the driveway.
Pretty much, yeah.
Um, with regard to the, uh, cul-de-sac and the, um, the grassed area in the middle, is this gonna be a homeowners association that has managed that?
Yes, these are condominium units, they're gonna be ownership units, and so they'll be a homeowners association.
And with regard to what, uh, you're dealing with the neighbors, were, did they, the neighbors express a preference or raise any issues with the proposed number, the eighteen units versus any other?
I mean, when we met with them, that's when we had first reduced from thirty-six to twenty-one. Um, you know, we heard requests for reduced density. Uh, so that was our initial reduction, and this is obviously a further reduction down to half of what we had proposed. So if you recall, the original proposal extended the project, say, I'm sorry. Oh, Amanda's gonna show the original version. Extended the project outwards North Street, and we had an exit on, or entrance and exit onto North Street. Um, so, thank you, Amanda. So, um, all that area, essentially that half of the project, which is woodland now, would remain woods and would be subject to a conservation restriction. Uh, so we have half the density that we originally proposed. And, and the reduction in roadway also allows us to have, um, less stormwater infrastructure, so that again, additional open space and, and grass area relative basis.
All right, and I, I do appreciate your efforts to, to bring the scale of this project down. I think it was seventy-two units, I think, essentially, yeah, of individual units?
Yeah, we had twelve, three units over.
Oh, so thirty, okay, thirty-six now we're down to eighteen, yeah. And I do appreciate those efforts.
So, comments about the sidewalks, I certainly agree with Dennis. I mean, having, you come in, stay to your right, and you've got no sidewalk, good percentage of that cul-de-sac down there, so I think sidewalks there, um, on both sides, oh, I mean, I mean, it's just plain dangerous for kids. That's my first comment. Um, second, the mailbox area in the front, um, I think you're gonna have people pull in, park it over there, block the, block it, I don't think there's, you know, I don't see that as being a, a good solution right now, because you're gonna have people come in after work. You're gonna have people piled up there, people gonna try to get in, if you can, like, we look at that area. I don't, you know, I've seen some, I've seen mailbox situations like that, and yeah, you want it to be early in, in their experience coming back home, but I don't see, there's not enough space there in my opinion, so pull in, park, get out, get the mail, pull over, lean over, you know, out the window, whatever it is. I, I guess I can't see that right now at that point. And, you know, without seeing the, you know, I see that you've got the effort, the giant, uh, trees in the front that have been added, um, you know, I, I still question how much of, how much of this you're gonna see from the road coming in. Um, and be concerned about that too, what can be done in the front area. It's certainly gonna, this is a concept plan, that's certainly gonna be a topic for later. Um, definitely wanna see, see what the overall plan is gonna be, I think it probably needs beefing up a little bit, um, as such. And ye- yes, we're down to eighteen, but that still looks tight in that. So I'll make the comment that, you know, y- you're coming in, you don't have enough room for mailboxes. Yes, we added some, some spots, but there's no place other than the driveway for a visitor to come in. And I know there's two in the garage, two in the driveway, but there is no parking place on that cul-de-sac, with the exception of the very bottom six o'clock to four o'clock on the circle there, for anybody to come visit these people without pulling into one of their driveways. So I'm not sure that quite works either, so I'm not sure what polls is gonna be to do about it, but I don't, I, I see that as not being a, a positive, and maybe it's because there's too many. We're down to eighteen, but maybe eighteen's still too many, so I'll just leave those comments at this point.
Nick.
We, um, agree with Phil on a couple of things. Um, just looking, I, I can recognize you guys have made the effort to scale it down. Um, I would personally like to see Building One, um, being removed. I think that, I mentioned it before, the line is like from the road, i- is a big concern taking away the buildings that are closest to the road, I think, could help alleviate that problem. And then a, a question that I would have would be the existing wooded areas. Any homes on North Street and then the home at the corner of North and Blackstone, on the side of the project, can they currently see the, the area through the woods at all? Would, like Phil said, beefing up the plantings maybe around the corner rather than just on the, the north, uh, the Blackstone Street side, would that potentially help screen what people can see from their backyards on North Street?
We've been looking into that, I know that area is high about, um, the new area that we added this about.
No, it's, it's pretty thick, I don't know, you know, in the wintertime, maybe five months out of the year, if they can see straight through. That's all I have, thank you.
I'd like to hold up, I wanna hear from the, uh, fire department on your concern. Did you get the water test results on Tuesday?
We did get the water test results, I, it's gonna be, the DPW is gonna really have to go through that and, and the volume of water as well as calculations from the sprinkler companies once it gets closer. Um, so, you know, that is gonna be one of those concerns that they'll have to deal with at the time. Also, the turning radius going in with the width of that road, um, I don't know if that's gonna meet our template.
Okay.
Um, so that would, they would have to make sure that the turning radius coming in from Blackstone Street, um, would, would meet the turning radius that was provided, uh, by the planning. It looks like it needs to be, I think it's, and then the same would fall into, uh, any parking that's on, if it's, if there's gonna be any on-street parking there, the road would have to be widened enough so that it would be able to, uh, handle fire apparatus coming in and going around the circle.
What's your feeling on the loop with the?
We always would rather have a separate inlet and outlet on these, so you have two means of egress, um. Generally, that's, that's our recommendation. This is feasible, but it would make it very tight, and it makes for a problem, especially if you had an incident at Building One, where you would then pretty much bottleneck everybody into the development. There's no way for them to get out of the development with vehicles if we did have, let's say, a fire in Building One, and we took up the roadway. It's, the roadway doesn't seem to be wide enough to handle more than that.
Hypothetically, I know you mentioned removing a building. Would that alleviate a lot of the problems from the fi- fire standpoint, safety standpoint?
It would then make, well, if that road going in had no buildings on it, it would probably alleviate a lot of that issue.
Okay.
Because then, all the rest of them, you'd have access right or left to get out.
And then the big concern is gonna be, when we hear that from the DPW, all the volume of water, correct?
Yeah, that's gonna be.
The flow test is great.
Yeah, the, the water is going to be a decision from the DPW on what their flow rate was, and if they feel, you know, and then they're gonna have to do some, some calculations, sprinkler calculations based on the size.
Based on your knowledge, how long should that take?
Well, sprinkler calculations?
Yes.
Um, it would depend on who they hired and, and how busy everybody is, I mean, that, it varies.
Okay.
But shouldn't be a very, and I mean, again, increasing the line size would give them more volume if they needed it. Um, but to keep with what's there, that's really a DPW decision on the flows. They just have to compare their flows to the flows that were done by their, their contractor.
Okay. All right, getting back, I wanted to hear from the chief before I made my comments. Uh, I appreciate everything you've done. We've come a long way. I think we're getting very close. I'm in agreement, I, I think we're not quite there yet. I think removing the Building One would allow us to reship the entrance, address concerns by the fire department, which I think are critical, address concerns, dovetailing the fire department with the, um, DPW in regards to. Um, that's where my concern's from right now, but I think you made a lot of progress. And I think, um, you know, we, we've always heard on different projects, a football analogy, where, where are we? Yeah, we're getting on the ninety, on the five, five to ten yard line, going in towards, you know, uh, something positive.
Okay.
Uh, what I'd like to do now is open it to the public. Would anyone like to speak, or does the, the residents have one person they'd like to designate to speak at this point, based on what you know?
Just wanted to say, I appreciate that you keep scaling. I remember in our, oh, sorry, Christine Tessio. I remember in our meeting with the neighborhood, we talked about removing one, possibly two units, and that kinda goes with what all of you had said, removing, you know, one more that's closer to the road, and could the mailboxes go in that area, so it's a little bit further into the development. Um, and the other thing you had brought up, sorry, Nick, about the trees come fall, winter, we are on North Street and don't know what builds here. Um, but we can see right through to the, the development, so we do have the trees there as a buffer, but it'd be nice to have something else, though we're not looking right in the back patios of these, of the temples.
Back in, in your area, is it correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but those trees there, leaving that as conservation land, that's very helpful, but it does thin out when they come winter, um, and like. And then you did mention there are two-car garages?
Correct.
Okay.
Two-car garages, and then each driveway can hold two cars, so the extent that one or more residents of the, of the two-bedroom units, um, choose not to, choose to park inside the garage, there's space for their own guests in their own driveway, beyond the kind of delivery spaces that we have on site.
Okay. Anyone else? I would start, um, one moment. I'm in the back row.
Sure, I live on Blackstone Street. And recently with this construction going on over by the high schools and whatnot, they detoured everybody down Blackstone. There was multiple times that I heard breaks breaching, because you can't see around that corner. As they come around, there was a tractor trailer that came around, and I thought he was gonna bite the dust, because he came around that corner not realizing how sharp it was, and all I heard was breaching. And that's my concern, is that corner, no matter what you put or where you put it, with the open land there now, at least you can kinda see around it. But as you come around that corner, you're not seeing anything until you're around that corner.
Okay.
And that's, that's my big concern, especially with this detour that's been going on, to get really bright to light on how bad that is.
Okay. What we could possibly do, I know it's not gonna address your complete concern, maybe reach out to DPW for purpose signage, and then also periodically reach out to the fire department, I'm sorry, the police department, to see if they can put a speed trap there periodically, or maybe we can try to get, um, a signage, electrical signage there, monitoring your speed. But we'll try to address that as best we can. There was someone else, woman in the front row?
I'm sure we've had, and I live on North Street. I just wanted to bring up with the buffers and the trees, um, arborites, we have arborites in our backyard, and they look like lollipops, so if you're looking to spring, um, it's deer food.
Okay.
We're gonna change that, that was my thoughts earlier.
That's fine. As we move forward, um, we'll get more information. We'll probably have a lighting plan, a landscaping plan. Uh, this one, well, most likely, when we get down to something close to the two-yard line, we're probably gonna do a peer review, and look at all the proposals, and then, you know, bring you back. But I, I think we've, we've come a long way from where we were, you know, when this first was presented. And I, I wanna, you know, thank them for the efforts they've made, but also for the efforts that we've heard from all the residents. Anything else?
Yes, if we could take, um, any comments that are.
Do I see, uh, that's, that's a hand up?
The cursor might just be on that.
Okay. Anyone in the audience have any questions? Any other questions in the audience? Um, Amy, what's our schedule look like? Is the twenty-eighth getting kind of full?
It is.
Okay, what is the twelfth look like?
The twelfth, we could do the twelfth.
Um, from the fire department's standpoint, if we ask for these tests to be done, we should, we should back in a month or a week.
Oh, the testing is done, so it's just a matter of having the DPW evaluate it and go through it. It'll probably take them, um, a short amount of time to get through it, so they should be ready soon.
Okay. Uh, can you be prepared to come back on the twelfth? Yeah, okay. I'd entertain a motion, uh, yes.
I just have, uh, David Wyatt from Higginstein Road. Are they considering on doing any more modifications to it, taking away?
We've given them our suggestions, they will be back on the twelfth, and when, you know, hopefully.
Then we'll rehash the whole.
Then we'll see what we present on the twelfth. Again, this is a concept plan. Um, I think we're working together, we're getting much closer, so we'll see what they have on the twelfth.
Right, right.
All right. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion to continue this to our meeting in October of the twelfth. All right. Any other discussions? All for the vote?
Yes.
Phil, aye?
Phil, aye.
Nick, aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we'll see you on the twelfth. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the residents, I wanna thank you all for coming. I encourage you to keep going. Thank you. What I'd like to do is maybe take a two-minute break while we, uh, switch over to go to the next item on the agenda, so we can clear the room. I'd like to bring the meeting back to order. If I'm going to have seats, you can find seats, it'd be appreciated. Uh, I can see some, uh, familiar faces here, which is nice to see. Um, this is a public hearing on Maple Street LLC. I'd like Nick to read the opening before we start. Is it, is that first public hearing under?
Maple Street LLC. The applicant, Maple Street LLC, and owner, Maple Gate Realty Trust, propose a solar array, which consists of seventy-four plus or minus acres of land to be redeveloped for a, for a proposed solar array, of which only nine point eight acres is in Bellingham. The current access road is located through the town of Bellingham at parcel twenty-six dash zero 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 nine, and is proposed to remain and function as the primary access road for the solar array project. The solar array project is in the town of Franklin, and will be for the construction of a new fifteen thousand kilowatt solar field along the new gravel access drives, associated utilities, and stormwater management components located in the northern portion of the existing Maple Gate Country Club property at one sixty Maple Street, Bellingham, shown on Assessor's Map, twenty-six dash zero 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 nine Zone Suburban. The plans were prepared by Bowler Engineering.
What I'd like to also read is, um, Massachusetts law, subsection. What I'd like to also read is um Massachusetts law subsection two forty dash eighteen. Proposals in two municipalities. Where proposal is located in part of the town of Bellingham and in part of an adjacent municipality. The provisions of development plan review shall apply as follows. A applicability of development plan review shall be determined by testing the entire proposal. In both communities against the thresholds of subsection two forty dash sixteen A. Part B, submissions for the portions lying in the town of Bellingham shall be as specified. At subsection two forty dash seventeen, proportions lying outside the town. Only those items necessary for determinations under subsection C on this section need to be submitted. Section C, the proposal shall be approved provided that the portion lying within the town of Bellingham. Applies to the requirements of the zoning bylaw and provided that outcomes from the entire development. For impacts limited by the terms of this bylaw, such as light overspill. Uh Massachusetts subsection two forty dash twenty-nine B comply as measured in Bellingham. The applicant shall provide an overview of this project um right now. So are they here? Please step forward and introduce yourself.
Evening with the chair, members of the board. Thank you before you again, my name is attorney Peter Brown from Brown Legal P L L C in Boston. I represent the property owner of Maple Gate Realty Trust, through its trustee Sally Winters. Also working in conjunction with the applicant subsidiary of Next Grid A. To permit the summer project, what we're referring to as the South Parcel, this first introductory meeting.
Thank you for the clarification.
Um, we had a introductory meeting on the North Project uh previously, and we are back before you. I believe coming up on the twenty eighth on our follow up meeting. This is its own separate application with its own separate property dimensions and its own separate solar project. And Bowler Engineering through Mr. Devota is gonna present it pretty summarily to you uh this evening. I just wanted to briefly restate a couple of things that I said at the last meeting, which are. Applicable just as much to the South Project as they were to the to the North. Um, our development team is Bowler Engineering. Uh we also have, I believe with us this evening, that'll be back here on the twenty eighth. Daniel Server from Next Grid, who's the director of real estate, and he responded to a number of the inquiries of the board. Uh the last time as to that project, and attorney Allison Fennell is also on via Zoom from my office. With respect to this project, we're here for development review under the chapter that the chairman aptly uh cited. Uh we are excited that um the French family through their trust. Is going to be able to convey this property. And introduce to Bellingham and Franklin a positive contributing force to the community and to the Commonwealth. Through addition of an important energy project through the solar development. The um family is appreciative of the support that it has received from the communities. In these past decades of operating and running uh the golf course, and it looks forward. To this property continuing to be part of something that is positive. Coming in Franklin uh going forward. We did submit with respect to the North uh project, a number of materials. That may generally applicable to the area and might cross over from one to the other, but these are separate projects. One of those submissions was a uh legal uh correspondence from my office with respect to the applicability. Of the Dover amendment to the North Project, and we filed a very similar one on the South Project. And uh we provided um a correspondence to attorney Bolburn as we requested. As part of that, the stating that the Dover amendment clearly applies to this project. It doesn't in any way eliminate your review under your ordinances, but it says that it's subject to that protection. And that applicability uh with respect to the permitting of this project. So with that, we're turning it over to Mr. Devota, who can go through the plans and briefly introduce the project. And we look forward to taking your questions, addressing any what any concerns and moving this project through. Mr. Devota is available via Zoom.
Welcome, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much and appreciate. Uh appreciate you accommodating me via a Zoom tonight as well. Um, as Peter noted, my name is Craig Devono with Bowler Engineering. Um, and if if it uh allows me to do so, I plan on sharing screens and giving kind of a high level overview. Of the project uh in reference to uh what's being developed on the southern portion of the current Maple Gate Golf Course. Okay, so so right now, uh hopefully everybody's able to see my screen. I have up on uh screen the aerial exhibit uh one of one. Is that coming through?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, thank you. Um, as an overview, uh this this project as it started, uh it does does include. Uh elements of the entire golf course uh as it exists today. Uh you see here uh the components of what is noted as parcel one and the north side. Uh parcel two, which is in the middle, and then uh parcel three, which is at the bottom. And these these three parcels were uh previously established through a an A and R process through the town of Franklin. The the Bellingham lot, which is located uh along the Maple Street frontage. Which is um actually three point seven seven acres of the. Total uh lower portion of the site, which it makes up a complete acreage of sixty-five acres. Um, and that portion, which I'll get into in a minute, um really will only have a. Development associated with utility poles and electrical conduit that would then be providing into the uh. Proposed solar array that will be in uh all all located within the town of Franklin lots. Let me then, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to move on just to my overall site plan exhibit. Um, uh this plan was a part of the the plan set, it was titled sheet C three oh one. For the benefit of understanding how this site relates to the. Previously uh presented north application, which was a separate application provided by Next Grid Mescalvia LLC. Uh, that development is shaded in on this plan in blue. Um, I gotta allow that person in. Um. What's relevant to us is that the access point uh located in the north, which is the located at one sixty. Maple, the current access drive to the golf course, is going to be still maintained as the primary access drive. Through the north north parcel through e access easements to provide access to through lot two. And then into uh parcel three. So the gravel access roads that you see here, this network, it all. Uh connects back to that same entrance drive in Maple Street. Down on the lower left hand corner of my screen, which I've highlighted in red, that again is that three point seven seven acre parcel. Um, that is located in Bellingham. We will, we we do not have a separate driveway access here. However, um to accommodate the utility poles that are gonna be proposed and to allow for. A gravel access point for maintenance or access for the utility company. We are proposing a basically twenty foot by ten foot wide gravel. Uh access way that would be directly adjacent to the to the current shoulder of the driveway. For reference, this is a screenshot of that area. Um, the the pocket of trees here would uh be be cleared out. Uh it's approximately where around this area of my screen is approximately where that gravel uh access parking space would be located. And uh this actually this utility pole shown on the far left is where our primary uh electric would be connecting to. Uh with with what will be four new poles on this side of the street. Um, as you can see, just for for context, the rest of the site, once you get um through the. Uh New England Power uh easement, everything on the right hand side of the plan, which falls in the town of Franklin. Um, that is where we are depicting our fifteen thousand kilowatt uh solar array system. Um. As far as the little blow up, I have I have an overall uh demolition plan, which I'll identify here as it's loading. Uh this demolition plan also was was part of the submitted uh site plan set. It superimposes our survey on top of an aerial image, and then we highlighted it in colored coded. Um areas of the the course that are e- either currently already disturbed within the wetland buffers or environmentally sensitive buffers. And then also um some areas that were increasing disturbance on those buffers. Um. This just kind of gives you an overall reference to to the activity that's taking place uh on the golf course today. And again, this this portion here is the activity specifically in Bellingham. I have a blow up of that area, uh which again is part of the plan set C two oh two. The bottom left hand corner here. You can see more specifically that area of tree clearing. Uh this this would come back approximately forty feet wide and about twenty-five feet deep into the site. Uh, in that location, we are proposing the four utility poles that are required to make our our connection. From the last utility.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What parcel is that on?
This is on uh parcel, it's a thirty-two um zero 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 nine.
Is that considered parcel three or parcel one?
So it it's connected to parcel three, that's part of the Franklin uh development.
Okay.
So uh.
That mean that's a total of eight poles? When you look at parcel three, so you'll have four and then another four?
Uh nope, that that was just me flipping from one screen to another. It's a total of four poles. And all four poles are located on the Bellingham lot. From the last pole, what occurs there is it actually uh i- is basically a down pole and. From that point on, it would be underground conduit that will span uh the entire um. Uh, utility easement area and come back out onto the other side um where it will be then. Uh picked up and brought to the uh location for the transformer pads. So. The uh only area of of above ground disturbance uh would be the area depicted in this this yellow uh shaded area. Uh on the plan, the dashed yellow line just reflects kind of the outline of where that underground conduit will be running. Similarly, um in just the black and white version, it just id- identifying this area of the of the site plan of where these improvements are. Uh and again, this is the detail where that vehicle access space would be. Uh not not that we expect uh really any activity to occur, uh but it's just a requirement to be able to. Make sure that the utility company does have that access point uh in case they ever have to go out there with a vehicle or uh service uh equipment. I'm gonna flip back for just back to the overall site plan for one more time. Um. Uh just to give some context of of how this the site works. Um, the uh the overall solar development is kind of separated on parcel three into really three separate areas. Uh there's a uh existing Y shaped uh wetland feature. Um kind of in the middle of that southern portion of the golf course today, uh and we would be proposing a new uh access culvert. Um to go uh really over over the wetlands and um. And make that connection so that the gravel access drive, which has uh turnaround. Spaces at the end, uh would be able to have direct access uh to each of the two uh transformer pad locations. So from from my standpoint, that's that's kind of a it that I wanted to cover as far as the overall outline of the project. Um. Again, we we understand that um. There will be uh future submissions and review with uh Conservation Commission for the disturbance within. Uh the buffer areas that we would be doing the vegetative clearing in um on on the area of the frontage. And uh we do expect to have uh follow up meetings uh there as well.
You want to know some new new?
I'm sorry.
Do you want to present?
Well, sir.
Okay. Um. I'd like to do what I did last time. I let you go out of order a little bit. I know we have a lot of people in the in the audience. Uh what I'd like to do um. Is ask you to uh raise issues or concerns you have. We will get back to uh our fire department in a moment. But what I would ask is that if the question's been asked or comments been asked twenty-two times, please move on. And please try to get rotate. The number of people asking questions, so one person is not is not monopolize all the questions. Unless you've designated one person to speak on your behalf. So again, try to rotate the people that ask the questions. And after the second question has been asked. Within the limits of that question, if we could just not hear it again. You know, you were very guarded at the meeting uh a month ago. So um, we would like to start with a question, then we'll come back to the board. The woman the very back by the TV monitor.
Danielle Lambert.
Say your name and address.
Danielle Lambert, Lauren Drive.
In what town?
Bellingham.
Great.
Uh I do come from a commercial and industrial solar background, so. This is not new to me, so I do have several questions, but I will obviously limit uh how many I ask now. Um, one of the larger ones is both arrays fifteen thousand kilowatt. I did not look at the plans to see what type of panels they are using. I'm curious if bifacial panels. Would reduce the scope and size of the array. Which would then push back further from the Maple Street uh location and if. We have visual simulations available so that folks here can see what those access roads will look like. What will be visible from the street. Um I think that's critically important for for folks to to understand what it's gonna look like and and. The ongoing development on that road, I think the visual impact. Of all this development, specifically a solar array, concerns folks. Um, and the the other issue, question, concern would be if the board has entertained. A host community agreement whereby you can. Ask for additional training for the fire department or suppression. If you can ask for a financial consideration in lieu of taxes that may be lost. Uh from the golf course. And with that, if that could be designated as a towards uh conservation area that the the Conservation Commission. Planning Board of Town could could entertain establishing so that we aren't losing all of our green space. And recreation areas. No more comments, questions, but I will yield to.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the front, and then we'll get back to the woman, I believe in the back a minute. Why don't you introduce yourself, please?
I'm Steve, I live on Maple Street.
Thank you, Steve.
Um, I missed the first meeting.
Okay.
So I don't know what I'm gonna say, what concerns me was brought up before.
If it's been brought up, you can repeat it, it's fine, sir.
Alright, I've lived there forty-five years. And I saw it turned into a suburban zone area, which was. Not industrial and not commercial with the development that's just gone on. The other solar plant, Amazon, uh the compost and mulch places. All the clear cutting they've done in the last five and seven years, a lot of us have had water in our basement. That we didn't have before. There were half a dozen of us whose water lines feeding from the town rusted out. There were half a dozen of us whose water lines feeding from the town rusted out and we had to pay to have our water lines replaced because they rusted out from the high water tables. When we get high amounts of rain, it brings the water tables up more. And my concern is, I went online and I did a bunch of research. Six to eight inches in bigger maple trees or oak trees, any kind of tree absorbs forty to seventy gallons of water a day. Spring, summer and fall. It still absorbs it in the winter. Otherwise the trees die. But when you cut down thousands of trees and don't replace them with anything, where's the water gonna go? It raises the water table and a bunch of us have had trouble with water in our basements. My concern is, and it's not only Maple Street but other places. Can you require detention basins or retention bonds basins so that the water stays there and is gradually absorbed rather than going right down into the ground and affecting more and more people? It's it's like I said, six of us have had to have the water lines replaced because they they rusted and rotted out. And with the last five to seven years of all the clear cutting that's been done, more and more people are getting water in their basements. I'd like to see something done about that.
What I can tell you, sir?
Say again?
What I can tell you, that question has not been raised before. First time I've heard it. And we'll both look into it. What I can tell you is, was it three or four years ago? We asked to change the zoning on Maple Street to residential. And it was not approved, you're telling me.
I, back in the eighties when it was changed, I remember that.
Oh, no, this happened like five years.
And they were, they talked about changing it again.
Yes, surely did.
And when I went and I'm going back to the eighties, I asked the current, then current zoning planning. Back in the old days, they drove around and they look and they said, oh, that's a factory, so that's industrial. That's a restaurant like Mark Wagner's, so that's zone commercial. And so a bunch of people tried to get it zoned suburban because the north end of Maple Street, they're all residential homes. And it went that way. And that's the way a lot of people want to keep it, the suburban zone, they're trying to protect what we have.
We were trying to do the same thing and unfortunately it didn't pass a few years. But we we are well aware of the development on our means. But you thank you for raising that. Gentlemen in the front.
Hi, my name is Michael Capone. I live at Seventy Box Pond in Bellingham. You mentioned that the family wants to add value to the community around us, but what is the value of taking away that course and what are we gonna get out of the solar fa- the solar panels? The direct energy from that, do we see that in our taxes? Do we see that in our electricity utilities bills? Where are we going to see the value from that? Because the value that the course offers now is exponential to people. Everybody that I've spoken to loves it. I've been going there since I was a kid. I worked there as a first job out of high in high school. And I've been going there. I grew up in Franklin, been going there my entire life. I would hate to see it go because a few people want to line their pockets as opposed to people around us, like the community that should have some value to it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And now we we appreciate that and we heard that about it.
Sorry, I wasn't hearing the last one.
That that's fine. And what we'll do, there'll be a series of questions that both parts will get together and make sure they come back and address to us on the twenty-eight or subsequent meetings. A woman in, I think the Eagles teacher.
Yes, I am. She lives Fitzgerald, one twenty-three Maple Street. Last time I was at the meeting, you said that Maple Street is a scenic road.
Right.
So when we cut all these trees down and we put a gravel pit there, that's not a scenic road to me. My house is a scenic road. I take pride in my house. I love my house. I did flowers at Maple Gate. They're still there. And you know, you're saying you want to do a do something for it. You're taking jobs away from all these gentlemen and all these ladies and these kids. I mean, I see the kids like laughing and everything. And then you said you're gonna keep the seventeenth and eighteenth hole the same. You said that last time and now it's gonna be a gravel pit and you're gonna cut all these trees down. So where are we standing on this? And that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're very welcome.
Seen this road, the stone wall.
That hasn't been up, that sign hasn't been up for years.
We were aware of the city ground. And we will take that into consideration. As we move forward. Anyone else? Gentlemen, the orange shirt, huh?
Yeah, thanks. Part of the last public hearing, I provided a letter to all you guys outlining a number of concerns that I have or I had. Since then, I continue to research the effects all about Savon communities. You know, one of the most disturbing things I learned is that property values within the proximity of the site have been evaluated anywhere from five to twenty-five percent.
Okay.
And, you know, to me, this is outrageous. Hopefully, Bellingham can do something to not put the residents in this situation. That's all I got. Thanks.
If you want to forward that article to us. You can borrow it to Amy and that will be part of the record, as were your comments from last time. I'm sorry, can you just say your name again? Do you catch?
John Wojciech, W O J E A G.
And what address, sir?
By Apache Road.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, if I could just, if the applicant and the owner could have a copy of those records as well.
We will forward those to you.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, the blue shirt.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity again. I spoke at the last one. My name is Greg Dowdell. I'm from Medway. I'm the golf pro at Maple Gate. So I've been there thirty years, so no one should be surprised on what side of the project I stand on this. Over the past couple of weeks, I've also done some research and I've read some cases involving installations of solar arrays across Massachusetts. I've not found a case that involves an established business or golf course existing on a property that a solar array is targeting. In the cases that I've read, there's typically a reference to the Dover Amendment. As previously mentioned. This amendment basically gives solar companies the right to build anywhere, regardless of zoning, except if it affects public health, safety or welfare. Myself, along with many others, believe the closing of an established profitable golf course can affect the community in several ways. One, there's an economic impact. The Association of Massachusetts Golf Organizations reported in two twenty-two, golf contributed three point three eight billion dollars to the Massachusetts economy. Maple Gate, we don't have a restaurant, we don't have lodging. And the closure will mean loss of revenue for local businesses. A decrease in property values is also possible. The closure of a golf golf course will result in job losses. These economic repercussions can certainly affect the well-being of the local economy. Recreational opportunities have been mentioned. Environmental impact, solar arrays can have positive environmental benefits, but it also may impact the local ecosystems or water resources. If this is not properly managed, this could affect the environment and consequently, public health. Community well-being. The closure of a community gathering place like a golf course can diminish so- social cohesion and community well-being. Losing a place for social interaction and events can have a negative effect to community health. My question to both Franklin and Bellingham, are you going to take into consideration the effects of closing a golf course on the public's health, safety and welfare? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I ask you a question. Do you have a copy of that? You can email to us.
Sure.
And then we will provide it to the applicant and then we'll become part of our record. And I thank you. Can I ask a question? Yes.
As we go through the process, can you give us some figures as far as how many people are benefiting from a health point of view on a daily, weekly? Doesn't have to be hugely scientific, but just
Yep.
in general.
Yep.
I would like like to hear that in the future.
Witnessed it with my own eye.
I'm sure, I'm sure you're.
Increased people's lives and also people that have got received their cancer diagnosis have wanted to spend their last days at the golf course.
Yeah, I, in the future, I'd, if you could, I'm sure you'll be here, but I'd like to hear how many people come out.
Yep.
In general.
Yep.
Just so that we can get that on the record.
I think next fairly you should need to develop.
It's thirty thousand rounds a year.
Okay.
We've been doing thirty thousand rounds a year for thirty years.
Right.
How many hours of a week would you say that is?
How many hours?
Let you do the math. How many hours of exercise, but just in the future.
Lost the fifty from sunrise to sunset.
Yes. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I apologize, one.
No, it's fine, sir.
One piece that I forgot. Trees, they not only absorb water, they absorb carbon dioxide and release oxygen into the air, which is what we breathe. And by cut- cutting down all the trees, we're losing a lot of oxygen, especially with the heavy-duty industrial trucks going up and down the street now.
I I know I've already spoken, but I.
It's all right, sir.
I just want to reiterate that I I am in sustainability field. I I'm a sustainability manager for Dana Barber Cancer Institute in Boston. I see value in renewable energies, sustainable energy, and I appreciate that. But I also see the value in having a place to go like this for the community. And it adds so much value, more than I could see a solar field and a place that's already been established for the community. Needless to say, there's been a lot of clear cutting happening in Bellingham and we all seen what happens. We've seen roadkill, we've seen foxes, we've seen deer, we've seen trees gone. Carbon sequestration, like you mentioned, is an important part of our breathing. We need this. We need treats. We need to have clean energy and clean air. I understand that, but the clear cut, whatever, seventy acres, whatever it would be to to diminish that would be detrimental, not only to us, but to the environment around us.
One thing we're gonna ask you before you're speaking, by the way. I just wanna go off the record here for a moment. I apologize. Um, you have place you work?
Dana Barber Cancer Institute. Thank you.
That's what you guys do. My parents were there.
That means a lot.
I know this word. I can't, I can't say, I mean, I can't say it. What you do is unmoved. What I'd like to ask the applicant, and I know when you get back, can you get us volume of trees you anticipate coming down?
Greg?
Yeah, yes, we can. I I can tell you now that based on the total canopy area, we've we've already calculated the southern portion project, whi- which we're referring to, is roughly about nine acres of trees that would be removed.
In addition to the other.
The area. The the area specific to the Bellingham lot is roughly about two thousand square feet.
Thank you.
So Greg, this is the the Bellingham parcel trees, how how many, how much space?
It it's roughly about a forty by forty area. So it it would just be this.
It's the red area, correct?
No, 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 the red area is the whole lot. That's three point seven seven acres of the lot. The area of disturbance is limited to just this portion up by the frontage. So roughly about two thousand square feet.
Okay.
Any idea of the number of trees in that area?
No, I I haven't tried to count the the trees in that area, but I could I could quantify that.
Okay, now was there a small yellow area? Could there within that?
So that the, yeah, let me go back to the demolition plan. That's the area I'm referring to.
I misspoke in the comment.
So yeah, just just to clarify, because there was a couple of comments made about visual and 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 how much trees is coming out and what the view looks like from from Maple Street and just to just to further understand this area that we have colored in yellow, that that's the area to be disturbed. The rest of this would remain as it is, which is primarily a wooded wetland.
Okay, thank you. And gentleman in the back?
Yeah, um, my name's Mike Neemzik. I'm a member at Maple Gate. And my question is, why do we have to destroy beautiful space like this for solar arrays when there's thousands and thousands of miles of power lines throughout this country in your own town? You've got miles of it. Why can't you just put the arrays under there? It's already destroyed landscape. Why wreck something beautiful to put in something so ugly? That's my comment.
There's something we will.
And if he, and I have one more question. How many of you members of the board have been to the course? You know how beautiful it is. You've seen the the other day, we saw a blue heron flying across one of the pounds with a bullfrog sticking out of its mouth. Now, you're not gonna replace that with solar arrays.
Let me rephrase what I just, when I raised my hand. I probably spend more time in the woods than doing the course.
Well, at least you're over there, so you know how beautiful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Gentlemen, the white hat in the back.
So at the end of this, the twenty years that these solar panels are the last, is there a bond for the trees? Are they gonna replace the trees or just hopefully it fills back in?
As we move forward, there is a decommissioning portion for the panels itself. We'll probably look at a mitigation progress as we move forward. But I, you know, I do not know if we can address tree for tree, but we will look into this. There was someone else in the back?
I am a member, Anthony DeNorsia of the golf course. I just want to ask how they've seen the solar arrays that they've installed on the property already. If anybody's been by there. It's not only that, they don't take care of it. Not only that, it's still sitting there and it's not operating.
Okay. I'm I'm okay.
I I'm just.
I understand, sir. Let me clarify a point. I don't mean interrupt you. We were there today. It is operating.
Oh, yay.
Okay, it's been operating for two years. We have received complaints from neighbors. And we've developed a fairly proactive maintenance program. So that will not happen again. We've addressed several concerns with the owners. It's not Barrega, it's a separate company. We got their attention. They brought people in from Alabama to address our concerns. So we have had neighbors bring up your issues and they are being addressed. We have a very proactive program to address that that is being developed as a ten thirty this way. So you will see a lot of eyes on that.
Well, I.
Solar field now moving forward.
I I'm just saying that you're destroying a beautiful, beautiful area.
Yeah, but I'm good depressing.
I I get that.
I just wanted.
Whether they do that all the time, that to me is like be honest with you, I don't trust power companies and that's
Okay.
You know, it can be talking through the top of their hat for all I know.
I I understand. I wasn't born in X.
The other concern I also have was that, you know, they're going to operate this thing and it's only a twenty-year or whatever lifespan. Whereas the golf course probably can last a lot longer. I mean, we could go over all the things that are good about the golf course and all the things that are bad about the solar array. But when you do the two lists, the solar array doesn't come up to what the golf course brings. Yeah, she mentioned jobs and stuff. I've seen a hundred children there, having the time of their life. It's just such an asset to the community and I just think that the solar people are just gonna after they build, gonna be gone. And some of the things I've read about this stuff in this country, it seems like a lot of these companies are out for the federal money. It's like a money grab. And then they walk away after they build it, they walk away, they get their money, and I don't think they spend every dime building this thing. And I think they make money on taking money from the government. Okay, I just, you know, I'm really weary about what's going on here because I think we're all gonna regret this if this goes the way of a solar farm. And the other thing, the way technology is going these days, I don't think solar energy is the way. If it is the way, they should put it in space, okay, where it doesn't bother anyone.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
I appreciate it. Gentlemen in the, with the hat in the back.
I'm from Muni. I live at Forty Muir on Avenue, Bellingham, and I'm a man from over there. What's gonna happen here, what happens to all these jobs is what, sixty, seventy people working at this company? What's gonna happen here, what happens to all these jobs, is what sixty, seventy people working at this company? In Maple Gate, that are gonna now lose their jobs because Maple Gate's gone. Now the kids, like Tony and I said, there's gotta be a couple hundred kids every summer come in and they have their. Golf clinic. That's unbelievable, the guy they can talk to me right there, they take them out of the golf course, they're hitting golf balls all over the place. And they're having a ball, now where are all these kids gonna go if you close this golf course? You know, there's a big, it's a big thing here that you're losing all the people's jobs. It's what seventy people there, their job now they're jobless, and you're gonna have to come unemployment. Just for solar farm, though, we already have one on the other side of the driving.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't it getting a little ridiculous? Who's betting, who's benefiting out of this, in the Bellingham or Franklin? Who's gonna make the money on this? Are we gonna see in Bellingham our taxes go down, or is it Franklin gonna see their taxes go down? This is what my question is. And I I don't see why we have to lose a golf course to a solar farm, but like you said, there are so many places that we can put solar farms in. But don't don't have to be on Maple Street, Maple Street's crazy, now you got that new building that's going in on the corner of one forty Maple Street. That thing is huge. Then you got Amazon, you got Seven Eleven, then you got the um E and D, and you got the mulch place. And then you got a big landscaping place there. Even I go there in the morning, go play golf, I go get coffee at Dunkin' Donuts right there, there's gotta be forty Amazon trucks coming down Maple Street. It's crazy on Maple Street that way. You know, but you gotta think about the people that are gonna lose their jobs now because of this solar company. Putting in all this solar. Where are those people gonna go to work? And the other thing is, remember, when we had COVID. We couldn't do a damn thing. Except for playing golf. We were able to go out and play golf at Maple Gate, Maple Gate stayed open for us, so we could get out there in the fresh air while we had this pandemic over our head.
Mm-hmm.
What happens to now? Okay, this goes away, where did everybody go? You know, it's sad, three years that we couldn't do nothing, and we were able to play golf and be out in the fresh air.
Mm-hmm.
That were all the rest of us are gonna be like, okay. This is unbelievable, so I wanna know why, what are you guys gonna do about all the people that are gonna lose their jobs? And the poor kids? For the summertime, when they're there um, day after school ends to almost the day when school starts again, they're there playing golf. And playing. Thank you.
That is, thank you. Gentlemen on the left hand side?
Yes, Vincent Brown from Community Drive. I have three young kids, six year old, four year old, and two year old. I grew up playing at Maple Gate, would love to see them play Maple Gate. My concern is not only for my children, but for all of these gentlemen here and ladies here that are playing, their physical activity. You know, they're getting out there, they're getting their fresh air, getting their exercise. This isn't helping them. What is going to replace that exercise, that activity? Second point is, again, not having a clubhouse. When these guys are done playing, or ladies are done playing, where do they go? Restaurants around the community to give them money.
Mm-hmm.
Now, they are not gonna stop playing golf, they're gonna go outside of town to play golf. Now that money that was in town is going outside of town. There's a problem, that does not help the community. For the record, I work for a solar company. That's all, that's the point, thank you.
Um. Last two questions. I'm gonna start, or last three questions. Uh, one more just raised your hand, we haven't called on yet.
Okay, my name's Susan Cowell, I live on Hartford. Um, I'm a physical education teacher by trade and um have spent my entire life promoting wellness. And I wanna just kind of add on my thoughts professionally, not just socially, but also professionally that having um a recreational. Uh, facility in Bellingham that provides opportunities for a lifelong game such as golf. Um, that benefits the health and well-being, the physical health, the mental health, social health. Of our community, Bellingham doesn't have a lot of. Things like that, I'm so pleased with the set trail that's been such a wonderful addition, I'm grateful for the new sidewalks that have been going in. Um, that allows Bellingham to become a little bit more of a walkable community, we live in North Bellingham where it's extremely dangerous to walk on Hartford Ave on our sidewalk. Um, as there's eighteen wheelers driving fast right by us with no buffer. So one of my passions is to provide more recreational opportunities in the community, I'll be looking to get involved in town to. Help um make it a more walkable town, and this opportunity that you have in front of you right now. To block, if that's what you have the power to do, um this. Change. Um, you hold something really important in your hand in terms of the future, I'm not anti-solar. Energy, we're people who are considering solar energy for our rooftop of our home, um because up there, it's not gonna affect anything else. Um. But I do just wanna point out that um there's a lot of. Issues in our society right now where people don't interact socially enough. Golf is a sport. That people are brought together who don't even know each other or who go out to support them to play together, my husband and I play, we go and we meet up with other people that we've never met. And every single interaction on a golf course has been. Um, one that has definitely added value to our lives. Um, both physically, socially, um and it's. Talking about all the kids that um are being introduced to this sport from a young age. It's just a real asset to our community, and I hope as a planning board, uh even though this is a very small portion of Bellingham, I hope that you will do your part. To think about um what do we want this community to offer its citizens? And that's not a question, just a passionate statement, thank you.
You have any clues there on your notes, do you wanna provide to Amy?
Um, I have a study from the British Journal of Sports Medicine, um. I believe this was twenty sixteen, and it is a study um. Titled, The Relationship Between Golf and Health, A Scoping Review, and this was. Um, concluded that um. Practitioners and policymakers can be encouraged to support more people to play golf to associated improved physical and mental well-being and a potential contribution to increase life expectancy. Um, it goes on to talk about other side, but.
You send that to Amy?
Yeah, sure.
That will be a part of the record.
Sure.
Uh, last two questions. Woman in the back, who I think we first personally called on?
Uh, just a couple of quick questions with the other developments on Maple Street, has Next Grid considered. Working with those owners to install rooftop installations in lieu of. Taking away a green space. Um. I think that's. Well, and and if if the town will be under the MBTA ordinance to now construct additional housing. Can we approach it that way and combine efforts in lieu of taking away green space?
That that's gonna be a long term. Issue. But thank you for raising it. We will put it in our notes, but it's something I can't answer proceed. Last question, gentlemen?
Yeah, I just wanna add to his comment about the kids' summer camp, there are two. Local high school golf teams who. Are, their home course is Maple Gate, that's your high school, Bellingham and Medeville.
Okay.
And those kids, I don't know where they go.
Okay.
The place was closed.
Thank you for raising that. What I'd like to do now is um, ask the the board members. If they have any questions that have not been raised, I know you walked in.
Done. Um, what kind of feedback have you got from the Franklin planning board?
Uh, we moved through a, we moved through pretty well, um. Had a number of hearings, the north is just about done, we already got our conservation approval. We had two remaining issues and we're back before them shortly to wrap up the north. Uh, and the south, I believe, is having meeting number two coming up as well. So you know, they had some questions about some trees, had some questions about the equipment, uh worked through some uh access, it worked very cooperatively and. Um, plans have been amended and it's gone very well.
What kind of feedback have you got from the residents?
Um, for the most part, there was some questions on the first meeting, uh at the last meeting, there were about. Three or four residents, I think two from Bellingham, two from Franklin, that really just kinda talked about the golf course and their disappointment that the golf course is gonna be closing. Um, which is understandable and 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 uh, and we get it. Um, there was some talk also, as the chairman uh referenced before, about decommissioning bond. Um, and uh some of the tree issues that we were work that we were working through.
So we're getting a bigger response in the town of Franklin?
Oh, much better, yes.
Of what conservations?
Uh, the conservation, uh I think it was just pretty much the board. And uh going through their questions and concerns, and it was a good process. And that approval was already conditioned.
So they're on board with it?
They're on board with all, they're on board with all, this is a, the the actual development is in Franklin. The access is through Valletta. So people, people have a a tremendous affinity to the golf course, go and understand, but they also understand that their. Their limits are the zoning relief that's being requested, it's only site plan review. Which here is just about the development review, there's no special permit, there's no variance. Um, and we were addressing the concerns that were presented as only compliant project. And you know, some of the public's desire or or hard portion of the public's desire. For the golf course to remain in existence for a long time, is it not the the within the purview and control of uh of the planning board or the conservation committee? That's how we.
Yeah, one other question. Who's buying us once you build it? Who are you selling it to?
I I'm sorry.
Who are you selling this to when once you build it? You have a buyer already for the project for the?
Yeah, so the 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 property is currently owned by Maple Gate Realty Trust.
Mm-hmm.
The golf course entity is a tenant of the owner of the property. And the applicants of the north property and the south property are the buyers of this of this property.
Well, they will be maintaining.
Correct.
They'll sign the contract and the end of it, or. Let's see, put it in some landfill that you could possibly find that'll take it. Because I think there is true, but I think I found out there's really only one landfill. That'll take this stuff. Over here, so now.
So whatever the the decommissioning process and all, and and that that would be with the applicant. And that would be their responsibility to go and fulfill pursuant to the bond and the requirements of the board. Um, that would go and be done, and of course, will stay law as stated. Now, I I I cannot speak to the uh technical aspects of the uh decom- decommissioning, but our goal. And and expectation is that this will be here and be productive for a very long. Thank you, you're welcome.
Um. So the the the. Parcels are gonna be owned by essentially, there's subsidiaries of one of them, is that accurate?
Yeah, I can't speak actually what their ownership structure is going to go and be, but I believe it's going to be, these two separate entities will be the grantees. Those are the applicants, those will will hold the permits if this process goes through and gets approved. It's Next Grid is, there's one entity and then there's Next Grid, Mes- Mescolbin is the applicant for the south part.
And what's the necessity driving having two separate entities own two parcels?
It's it's two projects. It's two separate projects, it's two separate interconnection agreements, it is how the overall system and structure works, it's two separate uh solar fields. And uh we're very pleased that the parcel two that's gonna be in the middle there, that we're not gonna go and utilize for any solar development. And uh we're gonna preserve for uh green space and open spaces, yes, Franklin land, but hopefully it can be. Um, utilized by uh members of the Bellingham public as well, just like golf courses utilized today, and both members of the community and others.
But but what what's a necessity to form two corporate entities to own two different parcels and sort of be an R and L to a certain way? Is it, there's something driving that decision to have two entities, or two parcels, or two applications? There seems to be, there's a reason to duplicate efforts, right, so what's that mean?
Uh, it's not really duplicating effort, it's more of, this is more of an expert question. Um, so I would probably defer to this to server for the next for the next meeting, but this is standard. It's a, they're separate contracts, they're separate, they're separate solar, they're separate solar fields. They're separate, the way the the funding and the approvals work, it's the state through the overall smart smart program, they're separate agreements, so they would be held in the name of. Separate entities of the separate numbers and separate processes, and you would go and just for purposes of clarity and ease for title issues from real estate and things of that nature. Makes it easier to go and have your separate parcels. It's pretty standard.
I'd be interested in the answer for my question. This this what's driving the the two separate, I intend they're separate, I understand they're two separate applications, but I'm curious to what's driving that?
I will, I will go as, I will, I will prefer with Next Grid and get you an answer, but I can't say it's very, it's, that's the standard, right?
I got it. So, and that leads into my next question is that we have access through, I understand it's a separate application, but the north. Parcel one. Parcel one, there's access coming to the existing uh Maple Gate entrance, right, and that runs through the entire site. Um, but then, there's the other access on the other end, and this most, I think it's southern, I could be wrong, but the more southern part of Maple Street, there's separate access with this parcel. In that, that these are somewhat related, understandably separate, but I. Why couldn't the top, the par- parcel one access and poles? Connection point to the larger grid service?
Excuse me. I just need to check it for a minute, wait. Tonight's discussion is on parcel three.
Right.
We need to certainly need to keep the two separate.
I get it, but this is a question about access to parcel three. Why is it that the access would be sites? Can't allow for the connection to go through parcel four? We have, we have four sets of poles going in on the first parcel, and we have one going through a parcel three. We have paths going through it, and we're creating two access points, and I understand they're separate, I understand that. But is it possible to, or is there some other configuration where the the, given the interconnection between the 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 entities that own it? All to go out through the existing access point in the parcel one?
Greg, do you wanna address that?
So what I'll say is I, and I I don't know the particulars of how it gets done as part of the ever source study. But this gets evaluated and determined by ever source, and my understanding is that the max connection that you have at at certain points with them. Is the fifteen thousand kilowatt system. So they drive where we can connect, they determine which poles we can connect off of, and they do an overall analysis uh of how that impacts the grid. So, um. That that's where we get that information from, they dictate to us where that comes from.
I would, I would be interested to know the. The feasibility of having some sort of easement access, something through the other parcel where the, where we don't have to necessarily impact and put. Roads and gravel ways and install additional poles, literally, I mean, that is the the, I'm not a, I'm not a. And have anything to do with electricity, but we're really talking about about, I don't know how, five hundred feet away from each other. So this is, there's gotta be a way where I think it's possible to have the connections come in through the same point, and I know there's a legal way. Or it could be a legal way for these buyers to traverse the interrelated parcels, acknowledging that they're separate. And in dual way with any access point for this particular par- parcel on its own. You know, it makes sense, you know what I'm saying?
Those to me.
So, so the only thing I can say is, we'll we'll have to get back to you on that, my understanding is that's not possible. But I will have to get you some backup as from ever sources to why you couldn't uh make the electrical connection through both.
Okay, I appreciate that, and and I have no basis to to refute that whether it's not possible, and I'm just curious. If there's a way to to not have a separate access and to have things go over. If there's a way to to not have a separate access and to have things go over. As parcel, recognizing that it's somewhat of a under common ownership. Conceptually, that would be a, I think, a good thing.
It's a fair question. We'll get you an answer.
I appreciate that. And then the other question, you might not be able to answer this, I don't know how long you've been involved with the French family and their trust. It seems like. Outsider looking in and only hearing rumors that the 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 French family or the beneficiaries of that trust have been looking for. Different options other than operating a golf course. In this particular spot.
There was an agree, I can, I can say this in terms of history that I, it doesn't really have. Relevance to to the termination, but it's 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 context. There was a decision made. In twenty nineteen to sell the property. There was active interaction with both Bellingham and Franklin. With respect to what would like to be seen so that it could be a, a. Non combatant environment. So that could be all be a work for for everyone. There's been various things that have come up. Uh, along, along the way. Uh, we had resistance uh, from Bellingham in years prior about residential development, the things that were going to come in there. And so this is something that actually was encouraged. Not I would say directly by any particular person in Bellingham or things, but was encouraged over others that were proposed and possibilities in the past. And uh, so I think that gives a little bit of context and 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 history of.
Right. And and I appreciate it. And the only reason I ask you that question is just for the benefit of the audience members is that. The French family or the beneficiaries of the French trust and the operator, operator of this golf course have made a decision. Apparently a number of years ago that they're no longer interested in operating a a golf course on the land that they own. Um, so to the extent of closing the golf course, keeping it a golf course. Is really a discussion for the French family and and the members of that trust. Uh, so did they explore selling it to a possible, you know, if they explored selling and operating, operational golf, which you know?
Explore uh, any, any, any number of settings. Many, many of them were to be a sugar in uh, of the, of the, of Bellingham and uh, and Franklin. One such uh, discussion.
Could you speak up a little so I can hear you back there, please?
Sure, sure, certainly. And then there've been a number of discussion and options and a number of things that have uh, come up. Some have been uh, politely looked at directly, said, no, thank you. Please don't, please do not go forward. Uh, and present to us either in Bellingham or Franklin. One such option, uh, major residential development. Uh, a number of uh, of uh, of units. Um, and that was back in twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty. Uh, that ended up, uh, you know, not, uh, not, you know, not going forward, but there were a number. Uh, of possibilities uh, looked at and examined. Factor again, uh, some of the uh, changes and discussions of zoning within Bellingham and things I was talking about in Franklin. And um, I understand there's no outcome other than a continued operation of a golf course that. Um, would make a number of people happy, given their good memories and their good use of the uh, the golf course. But I am pretty pleased. Um, and I would speak for some members of the uh, the family and I can speak for the trust that I am pleased. I think this is a, a good result. Of all the options and things that could come in. And how they possibly could be affected by other developments. Uh, I think this is pretty positive. And uh, we'll do whatever good things and not too harmful things to the community.
But. Yeah, I appreciate that. But under all scenario. The trust family is no longer interested in operating a golf.
Of course, it's, yeah, this is not, it's not a question of whether, you know, of course, if it's made or or not. The question of whether this project goes, go, go forwards, whether it's that or something else. That, that in the past is the, the past and will happen in the future. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, can I ask a procedural question about?
Uh, we know, ma'am.
Okay.
I just want to hear from the rest of the board and then we'll go back. I know some hands were raised.
Couple uh. Couple items. Um, number one, the presentation that you cut on the board. Um, my copy doesn't have a copy of the nice picture of Maple Street going down the street. So I'm gonna remember that when it comes time to look at where the poles are and. Um, you know, we're. We're gonna make sure that that's the case, that it. That the beautiful picture you put in front of us, it stays a beautiful environment going forward as much as we can, knowing that. What you plan to do um, for the French family is what you're planning to do. Um, but that's certainly a, it it's a powerful presentation to put in on that picture right there. Um, the next question I had was the poles on the parcel that we're talking about today. Um, how many of those can go underground? Do, do they have to be above ground all the way from the street? And I think you said, what, four poles going in? Do those four poles have to be above ground? That's a question that I'd like to hear about later. Um. Or would you like to answer that now? You look like you were jumping.
Um, can we just wait?
Okay, we can wait.
But both parcel one. And parcel three.
Okay.
Are they, they have a series of questions?
Okay.
If we'll request, I might.
No, I, I really.
Can any of the four poles go underground?
Can the poles go underground? So we don't have this, the sight lines and the interview. And of course, we get there to that point. We're gonna wanna see the. See what you're doing as far as vegetation and putting, you know, we're gonna wanna see that, of course. Um, we're iterating Brian's question a little different way. You know, I'd like to see the business reason why. There's two different properties, two different projects, two different plans. Um, and it can be that is what the applicants prefers to do. I wanna hear it. Okay, I think that's a fair an, fair, you tried to answer it a couple times, but.
I answered with the limited information that I have.
At a different time, I'd like to hear that. Cause um, I'd also like to hear the impact to Bellingham of. Any pole that are going in and the power that's going out and what transformers in town would need to be adjusted. Um, is there transformers that need to be adjusted? Is that the reason why you need two different projects? But I'd like to hear what poles and what infrastructure in town. Would need to change, whether it's on Maple Street or any other location in Bellingham based upon this project. I think that's a fair question.
Yeah, they're all fair questions.
Alright. Um. The health question. Um, there was some testimony today about health. Um, and the health that this facility provides. Um, understood the French family wants to close it. It's, and they're the owner of the property. I would point out though that um. This town doesn't, the town of Bellingham doesn't have community pools that are open to recreation. We don't have tennis courts for the kids to play in. This is a recreational facility that this town values. Um, and I'll leave it at that. So the help, the, the help conversations that were happening. Um, I, I'd like to hear more about that. So those are my comments for tonight.
I can also give you some information about what we're doing on parcel two to help promote that. Please.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate, can I address the gentleman in blue? Just a quick question?
Sure.
Sure, that Mr. Uh. I know Phil gave you some homework. Um, I thi- I think it would be beneficial if you do return, which I think you would, um. Do you have any data on Bellingham specific residents coming to the course? How many members there are? How many? You know, teen towns are Bellingham residents? I think that would be great to hear. And then for the crowd that's here. I know that generally the planning board process is not quick. It's exhausting. We're here late, but we hear every single one of you and it, you know, keep coming. Keep coming to the meetings. Uh, we're definitely listening. Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna hold my questions to the end. What I'd like to do, I know some people had your hands raised. Uh, beforehand, um, like uh. I would guess part of, or their input based on what you've now, or perpetual spread.
So. Parcel three, couple of concerns would be the entrance and exit onto Maple Street in that area. Um. When they start the project. The construction phase of it, how many trucks in, how many trucks out? Who, you know, how are we getting the solar arrays in? And that is probably one of the worst spots of Maple Street right there where that little S curve is. Um, but safety, I think that should be something that's looked at from our police department and regards to. That corner, you know, you're gonna be bringing trucks in and bringing this equipment in and setting it up. Um, that, that'd be a big concern for me. And vehicles exiting that, to maintenance vehicles on a regular basis. What the sight line is uh, for vehicles that are traveling down Maple Street. Somebody coming out of that with a truck and somebody coming around that corner. I don't know what that sight line will look like, but it's something that I think should be a dash. Um. And now there's no longer one entrance coming in. There's, each one has its own independent entrance. So that's two, potentially two entrances onto Maple Street for two different projects. So we have two, two new projects going in with another, so basically adding another entrance. Onto Maple Street, which is already a tough road to drive down. Uh, it will need, you know, this, this project puts it pretty far into the Franklin. But water supply on the side of the fire department, if there was any kind of incident in there. So where do you get the water from? Where does our water supply come from? On the uh, existing solar farm, we made them put a hydrant across the street um, so that it was on the same side. We'd be looking for, you know, water supply for their hydrant across the street as well as. Probably one going into that site so that the distance wouldn't exceed what we carry for our poles, a thousand.
Then a thousand feet?
Yeah, what is it? A thousand feet.
It might give something five hundred and then a thousand feet.
Well, this, you know. So that we have that five hundred typical road, five, every five hundred feet for a hydrant. Uh, access road on this would probably be similar to the same. Or if they, you know, if they have some other pump method for water supply on the site. That they, that might be there already.
Maybe I'll go to some discussion from the conserver, where we talked about the uh, the battery, the infrastructure and the fire suppression system.
From this meeting.
Oh, we can go and get into that and respond to those, those questions and concerns.
Thank you. Alright, two hand raised.
Sorry, can I just clarify one thing?
Oh, boy. Um, yeah. First question is, who is getting the power from the solar energy?
He will have that answer for us in a minute.
Okay. Not, oh, where this power's going? That's the next thing? The power that's, the solar energy that's being collected?
The gentleman asked that question.
Oh, okay.
That's okay.
Um. I feel that you might have some misinformation about the French family and their desire. To sell. I'm not an authority to speak on this. I just wanted to raise the point that um. It's been said as if it's a done deal that the family wants to sell. And I happened to be at the clubhouse, the workshop the other day and spoke to one of the family members. It's definitely not the case. So I just want to encourage you to seek out. That real story, not rumor.
We, we've already done that.
Okay.
And we, we have a clear title. To their property that was presented, wasn't it?
We have that in the documents.
We have the title to the property in our documents.
What does that mean? I'm sorry.
I know what it's. By the entity that is doing this.
Okay.
They have provided us evidence that they own the property.
Yes. My understanding, I'm not an official. My understanding is that all members of that family do not want to sell, that there are. Members of the family who are currently running the golf course who want to continue it to run as a golf course. So because I'm not speaking from an official position and I don't wanna spread rumors, I wanted to.
We, we have looked into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Chairman, Mr. DeBora, I had a clarification. You can order it, right?
I'll get that in a second. Okay. A gentleman is back in the hat, I believe. Oh, I've talked to her father and all. They wanna keep it as a golf course. The son that runs it, Larry, he wants to keep it as a golf course. There's only three people that don't want it to be a golf course. It's the grandmother and the two aunts. Okay? And the grandmother's getting people talking in their ear about selling this thing. And now everybody else doesn't wanna sell it. There's only three people. Uh, that whole French family don't wanna sell this thing. That's it. All I can tell you, sir, we have an application in front of us and we have a title saying they own the way. And they've entered into two separate parcel agreements on parcel one and parcel three. I, I, I've heard the same moment you have heard. And I, I just wanna clarify one thing in a second. But you know, we are doing the best we can addressing all the concerns. And so, okay. Last question, amendment. Go ahead.
Last one is just as far as ingress egress from the site, has the developer engaged the existing? Owner of the, the, the owner of the existing solar field about potentially doing a crossing? And shared easement so that that is the sole point of ingress and egress for all three? That would eliminate the other two access roads.
Okay. I believe that was addressed earlier. I'll keep getting clarification. And could you please clarify where the second access road is off of Maple Street? For all of us?
Yeah, thank you. Um, that, that's why I wanted to raise my hand and clarify. Uh, there is no second access.
That's what I.
The, the driveway, the driveway that's there today that services the main entry for the golf course. That is the entrance that we're maintaining. That will provide access to the north project and access to the south project. When I was referring, yeah, when I was referring at the beginning to a gravel parking spot, I was literally referring to a parking spot. Twenty feet by ten feet, just enough so that when a, a vehicle pulls off, if they ever have to do maintenance to the new poles that would be over here. They have a space to do so. That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, and I, and I said that's the last question. I'd like to end with some of my comments. And then we'll go. I see anyone online that has a question?
He might have a discussion.
Right, he'll want to stop.
Yeah, um.
I can stop.
Bring the screen down so we can see if anyone answered, hand raised.
We have two comments in the chat right now.
Okay. You have the capabilities to open that? Um, that's not a question.
No, that's just a comment.
That's a comment. Yeah, we wanna stand, I'm sorry.
Maybe the person that.
Okay, it, Peter, you're getting real. Right here.
Peter, do you have a question?
We've been on mute, Peter.
Ash, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I, I wanna reiterate what Salisbury just said, that this is private property and. Seeing the other projects that have come down the road for this property, and I, I'm not a fan of solar, I'm more a fan of a golf course. I think we'll address in the lesser of the two evils, shall we say. Um, to see this going to all housing or an industrial park, I think that would not benefit the town one bit. That's, I'm just gonna leave that as a comment.
Thank you very much. Anyone else online? Okay, um. I saw one last hand up. I've been trying to. Get my comments in.
Okay.
Sir, go ahead in the back.
I just wanna say, all of us here, we're asked to come here on behalf of a certain member of the French family. We all were resigned to the fact that they were selling their property. It's America. They own it. They can do what they want. I cry, I go home, but there's nothing I can do. It's theirs.
Right.
But a fella came up to me that owned, he's part of that own, part of that cabal that owns it and said, we don't want this to go. It's. These are the three, as he said. So I said, in that case, you're asking me to. So I said, in that case, you're asking me to go to the meeting. He said, yes, I want us all to go. Okay, then I'll do that. But to be honest with you, it's a private matter in my mind. You know, I, I've never been to one of these.
Okay, I want to thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you for having me.
I, I get, I'm thrilled you all stayed and I want you to continue to come back.
Will do.
All right.
On behalf of my, my friend, the French family that asked me to do this.
Thank you for doing this.
I just want you all to know, it's not a, 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 what do you call it, a unanimous decision.
I, I, I understand.
That's not a rule, that's the truth.
Yes, ma'am.
Out of Maple Street, is, was it ever brought up?
Give us your name and.
Nebraska, maybe, uh, fifty-one Maple Street.
Thank you.
Was it ever, uh, the subject ever came up about the town's purchasing this? Was that ever?
The bulk of the, uh, courses in Franklin.
Correct.
So that is not an opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, was that?
We've not, we've not heard that. That has not been offered by the French.
Did the town ever consider?
Not that I'm aware of.
That would have to be raised by the board and select of both towns.
Is it too late?
Ma'am, I, I, I don't know. I, I don't know. I do know, um, the Frenches have received a return on their investments. Uh, and we have an application in front of us. So I, I don't know how and when, if that process can start. So I've asked them, now hold up to the end, I have your question. Disagree with one, one thing you, you mentioned. You said that the French family and the real estate trust would be the final owner of the solar phone. Okay, can you clarify that?
No, no, they, they are selling the property.
Okay, and that company, is it the, will run it?
Yes.
And no one else will?
Mr. Sir, Mr. Thorber will explain the interactions of the entities and how it works.
Once the agreement. Because you, you gave us the impression the company that runs it will be the only company. Today we found out that several years ago, Borrego Solar sold their interest to us a clarity.
Right.
So I just wanted, we should clarify that.
Absolutely.
Long term.
Yeah, that, that'd be the answer from the next representative, we could do that at the next meeting. I don't believe that is their business model.
Okay.
I am not the person on behalf of the French family to answer that question as to their operations.
I just want you to know what happened next door.
Understood.
And you've heard about the high water table.
Yep.
First time we've heard that, I'm glad that was mentioned.
Correct.
Uh, we mentioned every source, uh, at some point we may look at doing a peer review.
Absolutely, yes.
On the entrance way with regards to, um, electrical, uh, poles, we've heard several different numbers already with regards to poles. Another thing we did not hear tonight was the little pocket in Bellingham. Um, that is, how close to Maple Street will that be, sir? The yellow pocket I referred to earlier, but then that red sign?
Parking spot.
I thought it was twenty by twenty.
The, the, the area of clearing, geez, along the frontage is, we're calling out roughly about a forty, forty foot by forty foot area.
Okay, thank you. And how, visually, how will that impact the view from Maple Street?
Um, yeah, we, we don't, we haven't created some sort of exhibit to show what that new view would be.
We wouldn't like to see that. Because that may be some of the closest property to, um, Maple Street. It was mentioned earlier, um, that we'd like to have a three D visualization of this overall project. I think I would encourage that. I would also like an aerial view or our, um, drone view of what this will look like, so it can be presented and we can put that online. Um, when it's applicable. Again, we talked about the difference in total, um, poll count.
Um, water supply and where that will come from.
Yeah, the water supply will come up. One thing that, um, fire department didn't mention, um, although this would be in Franklin's where we spot. Correct. I mean, it is always for Franklin, wait, give me the first one spot. So I know people have talked about litigation or improvements and betterments. Our people are reporting their lives in danger if something happens with these batteries. Um, the entrance will be in Bellingham, uh, so we just, you know, we mentioned before of what we want to see. So I would anticipate that you have a lot of homework to address the questions from the parcel one and parcel three. So those are the only comments we have. We've had a very robust, robust discussion tonight.
Um, Mr. Chairman, would it be time to make sure all the letters are ready to go in?
Yes, we could do that, absolutely.
I've got a stack here, so I'm just going to read the person's name so that we can acknowledge that there's an actual letter that we've received in here. If you happen to be here, just raise your hand, we're not asking you to speak, but, um, there's a Donald Ralph letter. Um,
It's online.
He's online, great. Um, I'm going to mispronounce the last name, but John, uh, Woach, Dan?
I think he's right here.
Right, right here, sir, we get your letter, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, Danielle, you know, Danielle Lambert?
Danielle.
Danielle, thank you, Danielle.
Thank you.
We have your letter, thank you, it's writing. Um, let's see, there's a one from Jeff Fields, thank you, Jeff in the, Jeff here. Um, we also have another one from Mike Glavine, Mike Glavine. Okay, we have it in the record, thank you. Um, there's another one from Nick Lombardo. Nick, Nick, got one from him and there's one here. I think this must be part of it, but that's the one they have right now. There's one that was submitted that we don't leave right now.
And we asked Amy and we'll get it through us. We also asked the people that have read from documents tonight, how present those to us.
Yeah, is there a set of legal for that or just throwing M N A dot R?
You can send it to a Sutherland, Bellingham. There you go.
Before we end, I, I see, I believe I see a hand raised. Uh, Don Ralph?
That's a question again.
That's a question, yeah, okay. Um, before we end, I want to thank you all for coming. I want to encourage you to come to the meeting, we have a continuation here for a meeting on the, uh, twenty.
Is that going to give you enough time, the twenty eighth?
I think we have the north on the twel- on the twenty.
I think we're probably at this point, they'll probably combine two probably.
Not combine them, but have parcel one and then parcel three after it.
Have them both heard the same thing.
So that everybody could be.
Is that feasible for you?
I think it's going to be hard to respond to everything that was asked. I think it will be constructive. I also, I want to avoid any difficulty and avoid any confusion to the public or to the board.
Okay.
parcel one and parcel three, so I think it'd be better if we had it, it's back, April twenty eighth on parcel three.
Then what we're going to do is have, um, parcel one.
Parcel one's on the twenty eighth, and then we could do October twelfth.
When is October twelfth looking right now?
It's full, but we could fit it in or we could do, you know, after a while.
Uh, it's, we've already had a very long session tonight. I'd like to, um, push that off.
Beyond twelve?
Second meeting.
Okay.
I, I apologize to all those people here, but we've had at least an hour discussion tonight. And I want you to be able to talk at great length on our second meeting in, um, October. I know I don't want to rush this, so I assume the second meeting would be the twenty sixth. That will give you an outline.
Twenty sixth. Uh, yes, I just see a lot of the, probably the comments and the issues are probably going to be raised on the twenty eighth with respect to the north parcel, so I'm, I'm rethinking now the twenty eighth, it may be it's best to put us on and then if we deal with it more, more time, we can bump to October twenty sixth. What is, what do you think of that, Mr. Chairman?
Maybe have a discussion on parcel one and parcel three.
Potentially.
Can you get everything answered by now?
I, I, I think it's unrealistic if we forget the simulation and all that, that's
It's rather aggressive.
Because we need it a week before the meeting, that's only fair for the board to get all of that information a week prior to our hearing, so I don't think it's realistic to think we would have that within, we'd need it all by next Friday essentially. Sure, absolutely.
Much of it is technical things. Greg, what do you think?
Um, look, there'd be some information we'd be able to certainly provide between now and, and for that next meeting, but there, there are certainly items that were brought up tonight that we're not going to have all the answers by the twenty eighth. But as we've seen even tonight, there's, there's a lot of times where conversation has kind of slipped back and forth between the two and it, it's going to be uh, partially discussed, I would assume at the twenty eighth because they, um, it's just by nature of conversation. So I, I, you know, I.
And this is what I think I'd like to do. I want to pivot here for a minute. Um, what do we have on the twelfth right now?
We have Snit Trail.
No.
We have Zero Maple.
No.
Four fifty-five Hartford Ave. We have Blackstone Street, Blackstone North. It's a phone line, whatever works for everybody.
Would you repeat parcel and dates again?
Um, just give me one second, try to work this out here. I, go ahead, Brad, just trying to speak, like, go ahead, go ahead. No, I'm on staff, wait. If we don't cover it all on the twenty eighth, then we just have another game. I would like to, um, have parcel one on the twenty eighth and parcel three on the twelfth. And maybe, it may be a long evening, but that's what we're here for. And we'll do it on, um, we'll break out the two like we did before.
Okay. Okay.
I want to entertain motion, so. Now a second.
Second that, next.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
And, uh, right, aye.
Bill, aye.
Bill, aye, Nick, aye.
All right, so what we're going to do is have two meetings. The twenty eighth will be the parcel one, the twelfth will be on, um, parcel three. I think Willie will try to put this, um, agenda on the twelfth in the similar order as tonight. We're going to try to put the, um, two items with the quickest first at North Street and you'll be the last on the agenda. I apologize for that. But I would like you all to encourage all of you to show up, not only on the twel- twentieth, but on the twelfth. And again, thank you all for your participation. Please continue. Those people that are going to provide documents. Any questions, let's give you a nice name. Again, thank you very much. Thank you for listening.
Very much.
You were there to see the motions to adjourn?
Yeah, go ahead.
Next one, okay, so that works.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming.
Okay.
You know where we are.
So a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Can I say?
Brian? You have your calls, you have nightly.
Good night, Bill.
Thank you very much for coming, ma'am.